All right, you're all set to begin Jake.
All right, I will call to order the zoning board of appeals. Meeting for Wednesday, July twenty third, twenty twenty five, it's seven oh four P M. To all persons interested in or affected by the action of zoning board of appeals hereby notified pursuant to section eleven of chapter forty eight, the general laws, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and all amendments thereto that a public hearing will be held today, Wednesday, July twenty third. The zoning war appeals public hearing will be held by remote participation methods. Public access this meeting shall be provided in the following manner, the meeting will be televised live via Xfinity Channel eighteen or high definition channel one zero seven two, it may also be accessed. Via H T T P colon slash slash streaming eighty five dot town of Barnstable dot U S slash cablecast public site slash watch slash the number one question mark. Channel equal sign number one, real time access is only board of appeals. Meeting is available by utilizing the zoom link or telephone number and meeting ID provided. Public comment can be addressed as under more appeals by utilizing the zoom link or telephone number. The zoom link is H T T P S colon slash slash town of Barnstable dash U S dot zoom dot U S slash J slash eight seven five nine two seven nine one four zero six. Or calling eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine and entering the meeting ID eight seven five nine two seven nine one four zero six. Applicants are represented as individuals required entitled to appear before the zoning board appeals may appear remotely and may participate participate through accessing the link or telephone number provided. Documentary exhibits and original presentation should be submitted in advance of the meeting to Anna dot Brigham at town dot Barnstable dot M A dot U S. So they may be displayed for remote public access viewing. Copies of the applications are available for review by calling five oh eight eight six two four six eight two Oregon emailing Anna dot Brigham at town dot Barnstable dot M A dot U S. Um, so we will start the meeting with introduction of board members. Her Boden seat is absent, Paul Pennard.
Rosa.
Mark Hanson.
Present.
Aaron Webb.
Present.
Larry Hurwitz.
Present.
Manny Alves.
Present.
Rodney Tavano. Is not present. Um, notice recorded and I'm Jake Dewey, I think. Oh, and Natalie, yeah, Natalie Pittinger, why aren't you on my list?
I don't know, put me on the list, present.
Anna, she's not on the the our agenda.
I will fix that, sorry about that.
No worries. Um, notice recording this meeting of the zoning board of appeals is being recorded and broadcast on the town of Barnstable's government access channel. According to M G L, chapter thirty A, section twenty, I must inquire whether anyone's recording this meeting and please make their presence known. Seeing none, um, there were minutes from the May twenty eighth, twenty twenty five meeting and a June eleventh, twenty twenty five meeting. Proof of. Does anyone have any uh comments on those or want to make a motion to approve?
Yeah, I have one comment on the June eleventh meeting, it says I was absent, I was actually. In the building, I just couldn't access the meeting room because the elevator was out. So I'm not sure if that's a distinction without a difference, but.
I can add a note that says that Manny, sorry.
It is true that I did not, but this, I was not in the meeting room, but. I couldn't get to it.
And that's the meeting that we um just, we didn't hear anything, we just. Everything.
Yeah, but that aside, I would make a motion to approve both sets of minutes.
All right, and do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Uh, roll call vote, um, Paul Pennard.
Uh, yeah, I was not here on May twenty eighth, so I abstained from that, but I approved the eleventh.
Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Aaron Webb.
Uh, I'm in the same as Paul, but I do approve, yeah.
Larry Hurwitz.
In favor.
Manny Alves.
You favor.
Natalie Pittinger.
In favor.
All right, so the minutes are approved. Our first order of order of business is all business appeal number twenty twenty four dash zero three nine. Twenty five Falmouth Road LLC has filed an appeal of administrative officials decisions in accordance with M G L. Chapter forty A, section seven, eight, and fifteen, and section two forty dash eighty eight of the Barnstable zoning ordinance, the appellant. Is appealing decision of the building commissioner in issuing building permit P L D C twenty two dash two two seven dated September seventeenth, twenty twenty four. The permit was initially denied pending. The receipt of a narrative to explain the expansion of mechanical bays on the property. The appellant's position is that the permit fails to take into account evidence and documentation from the town records and files which conflict with the determination to issue the building permit. The subject property is located ninety five Falmouth Road, Hyannis, Mass. has shown assessors map three one one as parcel zero seven three, it's located in the highway business H B and residence B R B zoning district. This was continued from November thirteenth, twenty twenty four, January eighth, twenty twenty five, February twelfth, twenty twenty five, April ninth, twenty twenty five, and June twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. No members have been assigned and no testimony has been taken on this. Um, and we have a request to continue this further. Um, Anna, do we have a date that they wanted to go to or that we feel comfortable that this could possibly move forward, so we aren't continuing to continue this?
The date they requested was August twenty seventh.
Was there any feedback from legal if that works for them?
I have not heard anything.
Okay. Um, does someone want to make a motion to continue this August twenty seventh? Or? Further or?
Yeah, this is Paul, I move we continue to uh the August twenty seven.
I'll second that.
All right, roll call vote on the continuance, her boat seek, oh, sorry, not here, Paul Pennard.
Oh, I agree.
Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
In favor.
Manny Alves.
In favor.
Natalie Pittinger.
In favor.
And I am also in favor, so appeal number twenty twenty four dash zero three nine is continued to August twenty seventh. Uh, twenty twenty five, and now we have appeal number twenty twenty four dash zero four zero. Twenty five Falmouth Road LLC has filed an appeal of administrative officials decision in accordance with M G L, chapter forty eight, section seven, eight, and fifteen, and section. Two forty dash eighty eight of the Barnstable zoning ordinance, the appellant. Is appealing decision of the building commissioner in a letter dated September fourth, twenty twenty four, the appellant believes that the determination fails to take into account evidence and documentation from the town records and files. Which conflict with the determination and do not address the concerns raised as set forth in the appellant's enforcement letters. And correspondence, subject properties located at ninety five Falmouth Road and one twenty three Falmouth Road, Hyannis, Mass. has shown on assessors map three eleven parcel zero seven three and zero seven eight. Lots are located in the highway business. H B and residence B R B zoning district, again, this was continued from November thirteenth, twenty twenty four, January eighth, twenty twenty five, February twelfth, twenty twenty five, April ninth, twenty twenty five, June twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, no members were assigned and. No testimony was taken. Again, we have a request to continue this to August twenty seventh, twenty twenty five.
You know, I of course, Mr. Chairman, what um can we, wh- what is the issue here, why are we waiting for town council?
Uh, I believe.
I believe it's a matter if there's merit for this.
The standing, I think, is the question.
Yes, standing, we're waiting from um legal to give us that information.
The. I I think the 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 argument is that the appellant is not directly affected by this and lacks standing. And the question is, what what is an aggrieved party under the uh uh zoning laws for purposes of asserting an objection?
Thank you.
Make a motion to continue to August twenty seventh. Second.
Roll call vote on the continuance, Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
In favor.
Manny Alves.
In favor.
Natalie Pittinger.
In favor.
And I am also in favor, so that also is continued. Uh, moving along with old business appeal number twenty twenty five dash zero one nine Barnstable Black Belt LLC has petitioned for a variance pursuant to section two forty dash fifty two C. Design and screening standards, two forty, twenty four, one point five, C, three, B, standards for all districts, parking standards. Location and two forty dash twenty four, one, five, E, A to E, surface parking lots design standards. The applicant proposes to construct a new multifamily building containing nine two bedroom residential apartments on an undeveloped. And underutilized lot with ten parking spaces associated landscaping utilities and related infrastructure. The applicant is seeking relief from the proposed parking lot design for certain landscaping requirements with. Within the surface parking lot design standards, the subject property is located seventy nine Center Street, Hyannis, Mass. has shown assessors map. Three two seven is parcel zero six five, it's located in the downtown Main Street D M S zoning district. Members assigned were myself, Herb Bodenseek, Paul Pennard, Mark Hanson, and Aaron Webb. Um, and this was uh initial presentation was made and continued from the January ninth, twenty twenty five meeting. Um. Herb is not here. Uh, Anna, brief me that Natalie was present at that meeting and could um sit on this if she so chooses.
Sure.
Okay. Attorney Nickerson, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you and good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board of appeals, nice to see everyone again. Uh, nice and early this time, uh, not approaching eleven P M. or later. Uh, I'll defer to the chair, how you'd like me to proceed this evening, I could. Uh, give a recap presentation if you'd like, or I can turn it over directly for questions. In either event, probably makes sense for me to be able to share my screen at some point.
Um, yeah, I mean, I think a quick recap of the points and the relief, I don't know if we need sort of the whole presentation. But the points and the relief and how you are proposing that this would apply to variance conditions, I think would be the. The most part here.
Okay, great. Um. Uh, so to hit the high points then. We have a. Lot that is under seven thousand square feet. It has three frontages. With differing grades of a ten feet. Being the difference of grade from Willow Ave versus Center Street. Uh, which we submit is a unique topographical condition related to the property that could authorize this board to issue variances. Related to the parking lot and the associated landscape buffers. Um, before I go get too further, I I would like to correct a point that I raised in the memorandum. Um, there's, I actually miscounted a bedroom. Uh, as an office, so that there are nine residential units being proposed, but one of those units is a one bedroom unit, not a two bedroom unit. Uh, I just wanted to raise that before we get farther, I'd be happy to. Uh, direct you to that plan showing the one bedroom unit if you'd like, but essentially, uh, given the unique. Shape of the lot, which is nearly surrounded by public ways of Willow Ave, Dynaflow Drive and Center Street. Along with the ten foot difference in topography, there's a slope running down to Center Street. The only practical place for the parking to be put for this redevelopment is to the. Um, is within the frontage on Willow Avenue. We're proposing a total of ten spots, one of which is handicap accessible with an access ramp. Um, the location of the parking lot is the impetus for the request for variance. Because two forty fifty two C prohibits vehicles essentially from uh backing into a public way. Uh, um, and two forty, two forty one, five, C three essentially prohibits uh parking lot being placed within a. Frontage area of a lot or within a required landscape buffer. Uh, essentially, in a nutshell, two forty, twenty four point one, five, E, A through E, all relate to landscape plantings. Buffer widths and types of plantings uh to be constructed with any new parking lot, as you read it under the ordinance. Um, there is a generous, I submit, there's a generous amount of landscaping being proposed. I believe there's seventy one plans in total being proposed around the um as as part of the redevelopment, but. We are missing some technical aspects of certain widths, certain locations of buffers, certain types of planting, et cetera, so we've. Requested variances from two forty, twenty four point one point five, E, A through E. To the extent we believe those variances are needed. Um, I would just add as another point, which I didn't raise in the initial presentation was that. Uh, two forty, twenty four point one point five, uh, E. One A. Provides that these sections of relief we're seeking related to the landscaping. Apply to the construction of any new surface parking lot. And the expansion or modification of an existing surface parking lot containing twenty one or more parking spaces. That increases the number of parking spaces by five or more. So it does beg the question of whether two forty, twenty four point one point five, E, A through E would apply to a new. Surface parking lot containing one space or two space or three spaces, if it's new construction, the subsection applies. Um, but if you are increasing a parking lot of containing twenty one or more spaces by four. The section doesn't strictly apply reading the ordinance, so. Uh, we thought we'd err on the side of caution, request relief from subsections A through E under section two forty, twenty four point one point five. E, uh, with that quick recap, I'd be happy to. Give it back to you, Mr. Chairman, and uh either have me sh- share my screen or have you know, bring up the. Submitted documents with any questions you might have.
Thank you, um, do any board members have any questions?
Uh, I do. Um, well, I don't know if this is best saved for discussion, it was more.
But I think questions related to content and, you know, presentation, not deliberation. I think it's where we're at right now.
E, okay, so maybe this might be, and I'll present it, and if you think not, please just stop me. Um, two questions with regard to the uniqueness of the lot. So. Took some time to look over some of the, just the sky maps, Google Earth, go on and looked around in there. Right off the bat. Um, one of the things that sort of strikes me on this, which would be number one, is. I I don't know that when you really look at this property and you look within, say, a couple of thousand feet. This property, there are many properties in this area that are flanked by two to three frontages. Um, there are multiple properties within a stone's throw that have. Grade changes from low to high. There are many properties within a stone's throw of this property that are uniquely shaped in in in. And when you really look at it, there are not many that are square or, so where I'm where I'm struggling a little bit. Just right off of that is, is this a unique property? Is this a unique? Situation where where it's an outlier? When I look at that, I don't see it necessarily as an outlier, could you maybe expand on how you? Uh, you know, based on what I just said there. Is is this still an outlying property, is this, is this, you know, is there something with regard to soil shape, topography that is drastically different? Than any of the properties that are, say, within a thousand to fifteen hundred feet, if you drew a radius?
Uh, I'll I'll jump in, Pat, uh, if I may, Mr. Chairman, Attorney John Kenny, uh, also representing the applicant. Uh, Mr. Hanson, I think part of the answer to your question is, uh, is in how you stated it, there were, there are some lots that have, uh, 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 bound by three roads, there are some lots that have. Uh, to- top- topographical changes that are similar, but he didn't mention any that have uh both combinations of the frontage of uh thr- on three different sides. And a ten foot drop from one one side to the other. So I think that's, I I think there's more than adequate information to argue that this is a uh unique lot, and also when you look even at the zoning ordinance. Uh, in the downtown Main Street Village District. Uh, the. When they talk about the zoning and frontage types, et cetera. You look at them, uh, at the uh examples and they're all two sided. So this is kind of unique in the sense that the, and and the zoning talks about uh primary frontage and secondary frontage, it never mentions tertiary every front- frontage. So I think uh the ordinance in and of itself, along with the way you've framed your question. Uh, kind of show that this is a unique property in in the district, uh, with the combination of those topographical features.
I mean, I can appreciate that, but I again, I I think, you know, there's. Uh, there are properties that literally almost abut this that are, that have the grade change, I mean, it's, that have three, now, they may not be residential or land. But there are certainly like, whether it's ten feet or seven feet, uh, again, I'm just throwing it out there. That I I don't know that this particularly is something that um is particularly different than what surrounds it, um, again, I'll I'll leave it to the board to just.
If I may just address that last point, um, briefly, um, um. To answer the question about how how unique must a property be to qualify for a variance and and what context are we? Uh, viewing uniqueness on a scale, um, the the section two forty one twenty six of the ordinance. Re- requires the board to find uh specifically owing to circumstances related to the soil conditions. Shape, topography of such land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally. The zoning district in which it is located. That is, that is really the the measurement for how we should be weighing the uniqueness, not necessarily the surrounding lots. Which may also have unique features such as changes in grade and topography and numbers of frontages, but. You have to look at the zoning district generally and compare it to the entirety of the D M S. Not necessarily the neighborhood, and I'd submit that abutting properties that have similar unique topo- topographical features or multiple frontages would also. Uh, arguably have variance conditions entitling them to relief because those conditions don't generally affect the district.
But a shape perspective, if you look at the zoning district, you guys are not an outlier. There are many, I mean, it's a downtown zone, there's many lots that are on multiple frontages. Pretty consistent throughout the district.
It's just not, it's not just the frontages, though, it's the frontages and the topography, so while there are lots with multiple frontages. Ours has three and has varying grades of drop off of ten feet from Willow Avenue to Center Street.
If I can just jump in here real quick and just add my two cents, I I found driving the property, you know, the the Willow. Taking a right on Dynaflow, taking a right on center, I found the property to be pretty unique, Willow and center run concurrently. But as they approach Dynaflow, they pie shape down into a much narrower section. Uh, the drop off is very significant, in my opinion, from the top of Willow down to Center Street. And and the net, the property gets considerably more narrow than the adjoining properties. Um, you know, heading centered towards Main Street, I guess, is the only real sort of uh. You know, sort of properties uh neighboring it, so I I certainly, in my opinion, driving it physically myself, I found it to be a pretty unique. Um, a lot, and and the drop off is surely significant. But that's my two cents, so. I'm not saying it's an outlier per se, but it certainly is a um, has top of gov, top, excuse me, has challenges for sure, excuse me, sir.
Uh, any other board members have questions?
Yeah.
Like right at the point deliberating, but more questions.
Yeah, I just have a question, I'm looking at the plans right now. And um, so it looks like the the part that's going to be on Center Street is a three story, three level.
Correct.
Plan, is that correct? And then figure out where are the doorways? There's some um above and some some on the first level and some on the second level. Are those? I'm taking, I I'm taking those are just the the second egress, right?
Um, you you, some additional information could be gleaned from the floor plans. Um, reading those in conjunction with the elevation plans, I think will answer your question, um, basically, there are one, two, three, four, five doors on the ground story.
Three, four. One, two, three, four, five, yeah, that's the sixth one, and that would be on Center Street, I mean, excuse me, on Willow Street, I think.
Um, okay, so.
What's the main address, I guess, and Center Street is the main address, right, so that's the front. But that will actually be the back of the building, correct?
Good evening, good evening, Patrick, if I may, uh, waiting, my name is Nader, I'm here representing Soul Plus, the design team. So the Center Street facade where uh we have the three story level facade, we have the entrance doors to the basement. So we were seeing on the elevation those five doors, three of those doors are for the units one, two, and three. And we have one extra door for an electrical closet and another uh door for a mechanical closet.
Okay.
The other six doors, which would lead towards the other six units, they are facing Willow Ave Street. So we have those nine entrance, three on the Center Street and six doors uh through the Willow Ave.
Okay. And and so with the uh, the ten parking spaces, that's all there's going to be, there's no more room for any more parking than ten, and there's nine units, right?
Exactly.
There's nine units, um, I'll, I could defer to Ed Pesci regarding if there's any more room for any additional parking, Ed?
I think your. Your mic is muted, and, sorry.
I have a button here, it didn't work, hello, everybody, I'm Ed Pesci from Pesci Engineering, also representing the applicants. Um, yes, so there is, uh, we are proposing ten parking spaces. Um, we have put as many parking spaces as we could possibly fit there. Um, part of the problem is, and we are mirroring, I just want to point out, um, you know, we're talking about the uniqueness of the site. Uh, I will, I will certainly make the point that the adjacent properties are also accessing their um site from Willow Ave, just like we're proposing. And so there's no other spaces available, no other space available on Willow Ave. Because on one side, we're providing um a screen trash can location, and on the other side is the edge edge of Dynaflow, and there's just no. Um, safe way to add another parking space down there. On the sides of the building. On the sides of the building, we have drainage systems that are proposed for the roof drains. Um, and it's just not a reasonable access, in my opinion, to back out onto onto Willow, uh, excuse me, Dynaflow Ave. Um, due to the lack of traffic, the intensity of traffic, and the fact that. All the abutting properties are accessing the same way, it makes perfect sense to to um to drive into. Uh, the parking spaces as we've shown and back out onto Willow Ave. Um, but yes, I I mean, we honestly, we uh did our best to try to add as many parking spaces as we could. Uh, we're required to have that nine parking spaces and we were able to get a tenth parking space. Um, and um, that's as much as we can fit.
There's also a access aisle for the handicap space.
Right, which includes, unfortunately, yes, if we didn't have to have a handicap space, we'd have eleven parking spaces, but obviously, we have. Um, the load and unload area for the handicap parking space.
So all these tenants will have one car only, that's correct, right?
Uh, they'll only be able to park one car, correct?
Okay.
Did, um, Mr. Pesci, did you look at, you know, because you've asked for these to not back onto the street? Have, did you look at turning them left and right so they're not backing onto the street or some other parking solution?
Yeah, we did, but this is the only one that made sense from a, a, you know, position of the building facing the 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 front on Center Street. And um having the access, a reasonable, safe access. Uh, off to for the building made the best sense, there's just no access, there's no accessibility really from Center Street. No reasonable access because there's an intersection there, the best and safe access is on Willow Ave. And indeed, it's is born kind of, you know, tested true that that's exactly the way the abutting properties do it.
Yeah, but unfortunately, they were built before this zoning, so that's irrelevant.
But we're not here to talk about parking, so let's, let's. They refit, well, no, they, we're not, Jake, they.
A number of, I'm not talking number of parking spaces.
But they fit the requirement of parking, so I don't know why we're beating this down.
Well, we are asking for relief, we are, yeah, I I appreciate the support, we are asking for relief to back into. Parking spaces to back onto Willow Ave, which makes perfect sense, it's the safest way. It was endorsed by the Site Plan Review Committee, including the Fire Department, of course. And uh, as you know, perhaps this also uh did get some review and uh for relief we needed for fenestration with the planning board, and you folks are the last step.
You look at underground parking, parking underneath the building?
We did not look at that, the cost to do so would be prohibitive based on the number of units, if it was a twenty eight unit building or twenty nine unit building, maybe that would be able to be. Be handled, but the 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 cost to do so would be prohibitive.
One other point, uh, the primary primary frontage uh is identified as Center Street. And we have to, the.
And we have to, the maximum uh, setback we can have from Center Street is fifteen feet. So it doesn't really leave room for parking uh, to access Center Street.
That's true as well.
Yeah. Okay, um, and then to the the variance for the plantings. Are you suggesting that the plantings can't be made because of the topography of the lot?
It's a combination of factors, including topography, but also the eighty percent facade build out requirement, fronting on Center Street, along with the uh, forty percent secondary front out, frontage build out requirement along Dynaflow Drive. I can turn it over to Ben LaFrance at this point to discuss the types of plantings and their location in relation to the building and setbacks. Ben?
Hi, yep, Mr. Chair, uh, members of the board, Ben LaFrance with Hawk Design. We're the landscape architects on the project. I think as, as was earlier stated uh, in Patrick's opening statements, you know, we've really planted every area that we possibly could find on this property. Um, we've located four red maples along Center Street. Uh, that will provide a nice canopy type tree um, between the street and our building, shade on the street, shade uh, within our building. We have also located one tree uh, at the intersection of Dynaflow Drive and Willow Avenue. Uh, that's an elm, again, another native tree, just like the red maple. And then really, we've just softened the facade of the building on both Dynaflow Drive and Center Street with a layer of shrubs. Um, many of those are native shrubs. As Patrick said, I, we have about seventy uh, shrubs and the five trees uh, at the property. Uh, you'll also note that there are, um, to Ed's point, there are uh, a few systems, uh, infiltration systems to handle the drainage, to recharge the stormwater. Uh, those are also located along Dynaflow Drive and to the south of our building. So certainly those systems are important to recharging the groundwater. Um, but they also preclude uh, plantings from being installed or large plantings, I should say, being installed uh, either over them or in close proximity. So, you know, again, I think, you know, just to hit on, hit on the subject here, you know, we've really planted every area that we possibly could on this property.
But that's based on the size of the structure, correct? If the structure was smaller, you could probably meet the requirements?
Roger.
I would, I would, first, Ben, speaking for you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first of all, the the structure can't be smaller. It has to meet a certain eighty percent frontage. So it's in this district that that the the town desired to have a street front look. Um, uh, you know, to enhance uh, the Main Street uh, culture, character. And the building can't be too much smaller to provide both parking and apartments. And uh, because of uh, its, you know, uniqueness, and we've discussed what that is, but because of its uniqueness, it's not much different can be made, not much, not much change can be made on a site plan design from what we've already done. We have changed it over the last several months. We did that going through the site plan review process. But um, it is really at the point where it fits, it meets the uh, general definitions for 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 all the zoning um, code requirements, except for a few that are engaged in landscaping. Some of the landscaping requirement requires that you provide landscaping between the street and the parking. Obviously, you can see from the layout um, that we have parking adjacent to the street and it's just not feasible for that area. That's kind of why and one of the reasons why we're here.
Mr. Chairman, the, if I can just build on that point, the the irony here is that if the setback is zero, there's actually no landscaping that's required under the ordinance. And as far as the eighty percent frontage is required, the minimum primary frontage on Center Street, eighty percent is required under zoning, we're proposing eighty point one percent. So the the facade of the building could be reduced by point one percent and still achieve compliance with zoning, fronting on Center Street. The easier lift from a design perspective would be to make all the fronts, make all the setbacks zero, eliminate all the plantings and remove the request for landscaping relief or the bulk of them as they relate to Center Street, Dynaflow Drive and and um, so, I, you know.
Which again, that just goes back to the intent of the 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 zoning ordinance of, you know, when this was created, whether we agree with it or not, that's, you know, that was the the intent of it. Um, so I have to stick, stand on that, too, is that, you know, we have to look at what the spirit and intent of the zoning was.
That's true, and I submit the spirit and intent of the zoning is to ha- is to promote uh, thoughtful landscape plantings with varied species to promote long term growth, which is exactly what Ben LaFrance has done here with his plan and the limitations set forth with the multiple frontages, the facade build out requirements and the ten foot uh, uh, topographical challenge presented here. So I think he's meeting uh, the spirit and intent of the ordinance based on the landscape plan presented, uh, though it does not meet some of the technical requirements based on a certain planting, certain widths, et cetera. So uh, overall, I I believe the landscape plan meets the spirit and tendency ordinance, but does fall short of some of its technical requirements um, because of the challenges we've been presented with this specific lot.
Could the parking be provided off site and then you could do this by right?
I I don't, I'd have to really look hard at that, but I don't think so. Or at least it would have to be, I think, within three hundred feet. And we don't, we don't have that.
I thought we put a provision in the the DMS regarding that. About parking in within a a certain distance.
Yeah, I frankly haven't seen it. I I know in in other sections of the ordinance, uh, if you can have offsite parking as long as it's within three hundred feet of the property. But we don't, we don't own any other piece there.
Well, it doesn't require, it never is required ownership, it has to be a.
Or lease, yeah. I don't see anything, I don't, I don't see anything in the DMS just after a quick reading, but it it could be somewhere else, I I would need to.
Okay. Um, do any other board members have questions before we open for public comment?
Just one more, if I may, um, i- it relates to design and perhaps when, was there any feedback from fire? Uh, so the the address on this property is 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 indicated as Center Street. It appears that on Center Street, we are looking at the back of the building and it shows in the schematics that the entrance is on, uh, help me out on um.
On Willow.
Or, I'm sorry if I got that wrong.
Willow.
Willow, on Willow. Was there any talk of that? I mean, one of the things that kind of strikes me as odd about this, and this is just a a question, if anything came up, is this isn't, I I understand it's a facade, but we're really looking at the rear of a building here along the main corridor and and under which the parcel is named. So was that ever a question either from fire or, you know, was there ever any comment about the fact that really the building's kind of backwards? It's really fronting onto Willow?
Uh, there were no questions uh, through the site plan review process, which Highness Fire obviously participates in. Uh, I I think at the time of uh, i- if this project goes forward, at the time of building, uh, the Fire Department will assign um, addresses. And I think that will address your concern. Uh, my expectation would be, you know, there'd be Willow Street and Center Street addresses, I would expect.
And I'm only mentioning it because there's, as as you may know, there's been some real pushback at the town level from people coming into the town and about the aesthetics about buildings that we're seeing. And this obviously is going to be three stories, front facing. But it is, it's clearly not the front of the the part that's going to be seen the most. It's just a comment, I didn't know if that in any way affected as far as numbering. Um, you know, is this Willow Ave, is this Center Street? You know what I mean, from the street? Is this a concern? Um, so that's, it's just a thought. I wanted to see if anything immediately had come up either in site plan review um, and if they truly understood that really the frontage of what people are going to see is the rear of the building.
Well, we've kind of designed that, uh, what you're calling the rear of the building is at fronts on Center Street. It kind of uh, mirrors a little bit some of the buildings al- along uh, next to it. Now, it's one of the things that the uh, actually, the planning department was very pleased with, uh, planning board was very pleased with was uh, there's a photo, and I think Pat may have it in his presentation. And our our building kind of mirrors a little bit the building next to us.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I can follow up on Mark's question. And and I mentioned this with Tony Nickerson last time. The ordinance requires, the the, and you mentioned that this went to site plan review, that you submit to the ZBA a site plan which has been reviewed and found approvable in accordance with Article Nine, subject only to the issuance of a variance. So to Mark's point, to, I I was surprised that the site plan review materials weren't included with the application.
The site plan is included as page one of the file materials available on the laser fish. I'm looking at it now.
Oh, that's the plan. The pla- it says a site plan found reviewable by site plan review, I mean, found approvable by site plan review. So there will be a memo from site plan review talking about this this application and and each of the departments would have weighed in. That's what I was looking for and I didn't see any application.
Are you talking about the formal site plan review letter?
Yes.
I I have it right in front of me, dated November eighteenth, twenty twenty four. If you'd like me to share it with you, it's certainly available on your, um, you know, online permit system for this project.
Okay, I mean, it's just, this, it's, it's actually the only instances when a variance, it says the applicant should submit the zoning board a site plan which has been reviewed and found approvable in accordance. But ordinarily, it's only for 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 special permits that 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 does, that's specific finding that there's been a site plan review. But projects like this are required out of site plan review and it says it should be included with the application. Anyway, I was, I'm sure it exists, I was just surprised it wasn't submitted.
So, Mr. Pesci, is that, so there's nothing outstanding on that other than this? Everything else was approved?
Correct. Um, I'll read the uh, Highness Fire comments. Uh, there were four bullets, include fire protection and construction control documentation during permitting. NFPA Plan Two Forty One Plan is required. Unit number assignments and addresses shall be coordinated with Highness Fire and DPW. And third party BDA testing is necessary during permitting, permitting. That's the um, uh, communication system. I can't remember what the, I I forget what the acronym stands for, but it's to make sure that the um, radio system can works inside the building when they're responding to a fire. If that was the only comments.
And, Mr. Chairman, in response to further to your question, we did have to go to the planning board uh, for a special permit regarding fen- fenest- uh, reduction of fenestration. As uh, Pat, uh, Attorney Nickerson explained in his presentation, uh, the fenestration requirements kind of anticipate the first floor being a a commercial or a business use. Uh, it really isn't practical when you have all residential uh, because you, you know, requires large windows, doors, et cetera. Uh, and it takes away the the privacy one would want in their apartment. So we did have to go to the planning board for a special permit that that has been granted. Uh, and then we had to had to come to the zoning board for the variances.
Okay. Uh, if anyone has their questions, I'll um, open the uh, for public comment. Uh, if there's anyone here to speak to this, just uh, unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record and speak. I don't see anyone. Anna, we did not receive any correspondence relating to this, I don't believe, correct?
Correct.
David, there's no one that came in regarding this, right? I don't think David can hear us. Um, so I guess if there's no public comment, I can make a motion to close public comment.
I'll second that.
All right, roll call vote on closing public comment. Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Natalie Pittinger.
In favor.
And I am also in favor, so public comment's closed, public hearing's still open. Does anyone, I mean, we can deliberate if someone, you know, we're, I don't know where people are at with it. I have a really hard time with variances. I just, you know, we're rewriting something that the town fathers created not that long ago and spent a significant amount of time creating this to shake, shape our downtown. So I don't like making overriding changes to that. But I'm only one vote.
Well, I um, I I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, but um, to me, that that's balanced by the need for housing. Willow Street is, uh, appears to be anyway, not very well traveled. Um, and so backing out, considering the other uh, businesses that back out, um, seems to me, and I guess according to the uh, planning department, uh, okay. So, so I I do have difficulty, as you do with variance approvals. Uh, but in this case, um, I I think I personally override it because of the need for housing. Those are my comments.
I would just urge you that we can't lean on variance conditions based on the need for housing. But, and and housing is allowed here by right. It's just a matter of this structure is exceeding what is allowed by right from what is dimensionally able to fit on the existing lot. Because they could either have a smaller structure, they could put parking underneath it, they could put a single families by right here, I think multi fam- I think two families by right, and I think multi families by right. Any other board members have thoughts or want to make findings or? Natalie, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, it just seems like it's it's just landscaping. Um, but uh, you know, the whole area doesn't, you don't want to add something glaring to it. And and looking at the plan and and the proposed landscaping, I mean, it sort of looks adequate, it looks like it would be okay. But um, I I guess, you know, it always bothers me, the ten parking spots. I have no idea how people survive with that in in a real world. I mean, I would think they, the tenants would be out there beating each other with a hammer pretty soon when they can't, uh, when they can't park their friend's car in front of their house. I mean, I I don't know. Maybe I'm wrong, but.
Yeah, and and that's not what, you know, the number of parking spaces isn't what's before us.
Right, I know.
Our landscape is before us.
No, I know, I know, that that's true. And I'm just looking at the the plan that has the parking spaces and the landscaping uh, colored in. And I mean, it does look like it would be, um, uh, they would dress up the building a little bit, so. Um, and probably much more so than what's there now.
Anyone else? Do we want to close the public hearing and make findings? Uh, I, again, it's up to to you, all.
I I guess I would just propose that we find out how we're going to go here. I mean, I'm I'm more curious about a straw poll, I guess. But yeah, I just see, given the fact that they are using eighty point one percent, where the zoning requires at least eighty percent, really making the structure any smaller is kind of a mute point, in my opinion, at this point. And landscaping, yeah, I mean, they're jamming as much as they possibly can on a poached stamp. There's no, you know, there's no getting, there's no getting around that, but.
I I agree with Aaron. I think that landscaping is a market improvement as to what exists on that section of street now. And secondly, to have parking uh, back out on a central, central street would be a disaster, even though the the adjoining buildings do that. So I think in that case, I think that the um, to have it the way it is, is fine. And I, and I'm I'm sympathetic to Natalie's position on on parking places, but that's what the ordinance is, I believe, is particularly on Main Street, where they're putting a hundred and twenty apartments in, it's one parking place per apartment. So, um, yeah, I think, I think housing does play a big part in this, Jack.
Yeah, and again, the uniqueness of this lot is that those roads, you know, running, you know, adjacent to each other, perpendicular to each other, do form a sort of pie shaped lot. They narrow that lot once you hit Dynaflow. That piece of property becomes um, not quite as, as wide between center and Willow, um, to allow for parking on center. So I think they're really stuck in this position with parking, um, you know, on Willow. All the businesses on Willow from Elm to Dynaflow back onto Willow Street. The where they allow parking on the backside, you know, on the Willow side, they all, if you travel that road, you'll see all those cars are nose in and they back out onto Willow. Willow is a, um, you know, it's, it's not a busy road right now, um, you know, adding nine more cars to it. People living there, sure, the, uh, traffic is going to increase, but there's not much else going to happen on Willow Street between now and uh, the future that leads me to believe that people backing onto Willow is ever going to be more of a challenge than it currently is. And again, every other road, every other property owner's doing that. And I, I understand that's not necessarily our, you know, uh, our responsibility to weigh in on that, but given the, you know, again, all of those factors, um, uh, and the eighty percent, eighty point one percent size of the structure, you, you know, it's, they've done everything they can do. I, I, I really firmly believe that. So, um, I think that, you know, uh, variance requirement number one, uh, you know, owing to topography, soil conditions and structures. Um, you know, again, eighty point one, they can shrink it down by point one percent, but you know, that's not gonna give them enough room to add more landscaping, nor is it going to give them room to change, um, you know, the parking configuration, uh, from Willow to center or vice versa. So, um, I think the structure piece of that can certainly play into us. You know, finding a, um, a reason to, you know, I don't see anyone here from the public, so you know, I can't think that, that the, um, you know, neighborhood is going to be greatly affected in a negative way from this, so.
Okay. Um, if I might just, a, a quick question, uh, for design team. So wh- when you're first presenting, you were talking about parking under was investigated and that it was cost prohibitive. Would it have given you this project by right? Because it would have naturally, well, actually, no, there would have been less fenestration, but what, could you have fit the required number of parking spaces underneath or by having the, the separations, could you not accommodate the parking underneath?
Good evening, good evening, sir. Uh, I believe it was at Pashi who said something about that. But, uh, if I'm not mistaken, I need to double check this. I believe that the clearance required for the parking spot to not be like backing up, it's wider than the, uh, width of the existing structure. So, uh, we didn't do any plane, plan about that, but I believe that even though we did, we wouldn't have like enough clearance to, uh, park the way the, the ordinance, uh, requires.
So you're saying if you would set the building back where your parking is currently, you couldn't have accommodated a, a back out in towards center street? Is that, is that correct? I'm just trying to understand it.
That would exceed, that would exceed the, um, primary front setback. There's a, there's a.
Oh, cause there's a fifteen foot maximum? Is that what it is?
Yes.
You need nineteen or twenty feet to back up? Is that correct?
Yes, exactly, sir.
Okay, so there was really no other place you could have put the parking?
They would have had to build the lot basically fully out and had the parking underneath it and had the turnaround underneath it.
Underneath. Oh, I see what you're saying. I see.
To meet the, the ordinance.
Waiting the whole side there.
The building could have gotten bigger and then you could have all parking underneath it.
Correct.
Well, I think any exit or egress onto center is, is, uh, far more unacceptable than the way they have it now. I mean, center, center street is a very busy street. And, uh, like, I even have trouble with the existing, or concern with the existing businesses that have to back out. Uh, on that, right next to them, they have to back out on a center street. So I think, uh, if we're talking about parking, I think the way they have it is better, is the best, um, is the best.
Yeah, the eighty foot frontage was unfortunately a really, it's a deterrent and we're running up against it even in some of our own looks that you, you can't make it smaller. That's the problem. It doesn't, and even if you break it up, you go into a smaller. Um, you know, uh, you can't really put smaller dwellings. It would have to be bigger. Yeah, you're right. Put the parking underneath.
Um, so where would you like to go with this? So do we want to, does someone want to make a motion to close the public hearing? Or do we want to continue discussing or deliberating?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, you've closed the public hearing. You're in.
I, I closed public comment. I now close, close the public.
I'm sorry, public comment. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, this is Paul. I make a motion to close public hearing.
All right, do we have a second to close the public hearing?
Second.
All right, roll call vote on closing the public hearing. Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
And Natalie Pittinger.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor. So the public hearing's closed. No more testimony can be taken. Um, does someone want to make findings?
Um, you know, Jack, this is Paul, but I can't, I, I'm having trouble pulling it up, so you're gonna have, that's my excuse.
Does someone else want to make a stab at findings? Is?
I will make, I will make a stab. I, I'm, I'm working off my phone here, so it's going to be a little tricky. I don't have, uh, multiple devices with me here, so I do apologize. I will certainly, um, make a stab. Okay, so, appeal number, good lord, this is going to be triggered, I thought.
Do you want me to share my screen, Aaron? Would that be easier?
Certainly would, Anna.
Okay.
You know, I, I just pulled it up. I can do it if you want.
Well, it's up to you, Paul. If you don't mind, that would be great. Again, I don't have multiple devices here, so I'm.
Paul, if you want to go ahead.
Yeah, okay, okay, let me give a shot here. This concerns appeal number twenty twenty five dash oh one nine, Barnstable Black Belt LLC, which proposes construction of a new nine two-bedroom residential apartments, or I guess it's eight two-bedroom and one, one-bedroom apartment. A variance is requested related to, um, landscaping. Uh, let me see. Owing to circum-, uh, I find that owing to circumstances related to soil conditions, shape or topography of such land or structures and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located. Um, I believe this variance should be granted, particularly related to the fact that it's frontage on three streets, has a ten-foot drop and the lot narrows as it reaches its termination. Secondly, uh, we have to, I find that little enforcement provisions of the zoning ordinance would involve substantial heartsick, financial, otherwise to the petitioner. And I find that's true. In fact, because of the eighty percent requirement, they can't reduce the number of units, and so their only recourse is to forego the whole, uh, development. Number three, a desirable leaf, relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance. And I'm, I find that there's, um, little to no detriment to the public good because of the neighboring properties that exit, that back out on Willow. And the upgrade of the landscaping on Central. Those are my findings with conditions.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, so roll call vote on approving based on Paul's findings as presented. Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
I'd like to vote last. Thank you.
Uh, Aaron Webb.
I'm in favor.
Uh, Natalie Pittinger.
In favor.
And I'm opposed. Uh, back to Mark Hanson. Mark?
Anna, yeah, I know, I know. Anna, how many do we need for, uh, for passing this?
It's a variance, so you need three.
Oh.
Or four, sorry, you need four.
You need four, yes.
And I, I appreciate you giving me a minute here because here, I'm, I'm just struggling a little bit here because.
Just vote, Mark, no comments.
So, well, I didn't hear anything from the public. I'll, I'll vote in favor.
Um, for the record, I just feel we are, we are derogating from the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance as it was created.
Oh, man.
Uh, Paul, did you have conditions?
I do. I have conditions one through five, uh, that were from staff report, uh, dated June twenty six, twenty twenty five. Attorney Nicholson, uh, do you, uh, have you reviewed those and are those acceptable?
Well, we have and they are only with, uh, one condition of substituting nine two-bedroom residential apartments with eight two-bedroom residential apartments and one, one bedroom residential apartment. As I stated earlier, I, I miscounted a extra bedroom, which is actually an office based on the floor plan. That's, unit is unit two on, in the plan.
Thank you, Anna. Um, do we have, did you get that?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Okay, then, uh, conditions of one through five with one being corrected.
I, I would propose, I think we need to add something relating to the parking and the backing into the road in the, the length of the vehicles. The proposed spaces, I believe, are nineteen feet in length. And so I would be concerned that we're going to have vehicles in the public way based on length. So I, I, I don't, again, I don't want to make an enforcement nightmare for the inspectional services, but I would be concerned that there's a pickup truck there that then will be into the public way.
Mr. Chairman, the, the edge of the public way is, uh, actually, it looks like about four or five feet away from the edge of the property line. So the existing edge of pavement is more than nineteen feet to the edge of the parking space. So there's more than nineteen foot of depth from the tire, from the proposed walkway to the edge of pavement. So I don't think that'll be a concern.
Has, has shown also on the site plan Willow Ave, so fifty foot wide way, just for point of information.
Okay, so you feel comfortable that the parking spaces, both width and dimensional, will be sufficient to fit the vehicles comfortably?
Yeah, nine by nineteen parking spaces are the requirements throughout town. I've done a lot of site plans, uh, for commercial areas and having a, you know, barring having a tractor trailer, obviously a big, a big, big pickup truck. But there, you know, ninety-nine percent of all the traffic is accommodated by a nineteen space and we have a little bit more than that. We have something like twenty-four feet of length to deal with.
Yeah, this is Paul. I agree. I, I propose that, uh, suggested site plan review incorporates parking.
Okay. Um, we'll do a roll call vote on the conditions. Paul Pennard.
In favor.
Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Aaron Webb.
I'm in favor.
Natalie Pittinger.
In favor.
And I'm opposed. Um, so, uh, Mr. Kenny and Mr. Attorney Nicholson, you have your, um, variance.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. To, to member Alves, I apologize. I didn't understand your point raised at the last meeting. Uh, moving forward, I'll be sure to include the site plan review letter. I thought you were referring to the site plan, which I see was available, but, but the site plan review letters will be included.
No need to apologize. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, all.
Thank you. Take care, everyone.
Yeah, all right, moving on to our only item of new business tonight. Appeal number twenty twenty five dash zero two zero, Harold C.
Mr. Chairman, this is Paul. I'd like to recrue, recuse myself from, uh, twenty twenty five dash oh twenty.
All right, thank you, Paul. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Uh, Harold, uh, appeal number twenty twenty five dash zero two zero, Harold C. Co- Coxall. Junior trustee for the Harold C. Coxall Junior Trust has applied for a special permit pursuant to section two forty dash ninety-one H three. Develop lot pr- protection, demolition and rebuilding on non-conforming lots. The applicant is seeking to demolish and rebuild the dwelling in accordance with the plans prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, Inc. And Robert W. Williamson Architect, uh, relief is requested because the existing front yard setback is sixteen point eight feet and the proposed front yard setback is twenty-one point seven feet to the foundation. Um, nineteen point seven feet to the overhang where thirty feet is required. The subject property is located at two sixty-five Seaview Ave, Osterville, Mass. As shown on Assessor's Map one three eight as parcel zero two zero. It's located in the residence F one RF one zoning district. Um, so sitting on this would be our regular members, Mark Hanson, Aaron Webb, um, Manny Alves. And Larry, do you want to sit on this?
Yes.
And, uh, and myself. Attorney Schultz, over to you.
Good evening, Chair Dewey and members of the board. For the record, Attorney Michael Schultz, on behalf of the applicant, Harry Coxall, Junior, trustee of the Harry Coxall Junior Trust. Uh, the property is improved with a single-family home located at two sixty-five Seaview Avenue in Osterville, which is shown as, uh, Assessor's Map one thirty-eight in parcel zero two zero and is comprised of a approximately thirty-six thousand five hundred and eighty-five square foot lot. Um, the dwelling was constructed in approximately eighteen ninety-five, according to town assessing records. And the dwelling is consistent with the rest of the neighborhood in terms of size and setback on the lot. Prior to appearing before you this evening, uh, we did appear before the Barnstable Historical Commission and the Conservation Commission and did receive approval from both. Um, Anna, if you have the ability just to bring up the site plan.
Sure.
Just so that the board can, can see and I'll continue to, to go through it. Uh, with appeal number two thousand two five zero two zero, the applicant is respectfully, uh, seeking a special permit from the board under section two forty ninety-one H three. As the existing front yard setback of sixteen point eight and the proposed front yard setback of twenty-one point seven, uh, does not meet the required, uh, thirty-foot front yard setback of the RF one district. And if we're looking at the northeast corner of the dwelling as a butt Seaview Avenue, uh, that does identify, um, the, the present structure and then the proposed, uh, structure, which is in brown. Based on the following facts, the applicant would respectfully submit to the board that it fulfills the spirit and intent of the ordinance and satisfies the requirements for the issuance of a special permit by the board. Uh, first, that the application falls within a category specifically accepted in the ordinance for the grant of a special permit. Uh, section two forty ninety-one H three, uh, does allow and provide for the board's authority to issue that special permit. Uh, two, the proposed dwelling complies with section two forty and ninety-one H one A with the exception of the front yard setback, uh, which is greater than the existing front yard setback. Um, as shown in the plans that are appended here and, and shown on the screen. Uh, the proposed westerly side yard is twenty point two. The easterly is eighteen point three. The rear is thirty feet to the top of the coastal bank, uh, which are all greater than the required minimums of the RF one district. With respect to the front yard, again, we're, um, making it less non-conforming. We're going from sixteen point eight to twenty-one point seven. Uh, third, that all of the criteria of section two forty ninety-one. Uh, third, that all of the criteria of section two forty ninety-one H one B, one through three are also met. Uh, the proposed plan shows a lot coverage of fifteen point five percent, which is less than the twenty percent maximum. The floor area ratio is zero point one six, where thirty or zero point three zero is the maximum. And the building height from grade to the top of the plate is twenty-two feet six inches, which is less than the uh, the thirty feet. Uh, finally, I would submit to the board that it's not, that the proposed structure is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Um, it's improving the setbacks than uh, to what's presently existing. And we've received approval from the Barnstable Historical Commission, the Conservation Commission. Um, and it also is an aesthetic improvement to the neighborhood. And finally, there is a letter of support from a resident at twenty-five Seaview Avenue, uh, reflecting support for the project. Uh, for those reasons, I would respectfully submit um, that the board could issue a special permit and turn it over uh, to the board for any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Schultz. I only have one question. Is that coastal bank? What what is is holding that coastal bank or whatever? Is that like retain retaining wall or somehow retained there? Or is it slowly going away and getting closer to the structure?
I can speak to that, Michael, if you'd like. I'm uh, Robert Williams, I'm the architect for the project. It's an existing uh, riprap structure.
Okay.
Um, sloped approximately forty-five degrees. Um, and it's in very good shape, I would say. Uh, I'm not a civil engineer myself, but um, you know, uh, visibly in in good shape with large folders and um, no signs of erosion. And uh, we have Wilkinson Ecological Design uh, on um, on the team, which has um created a plan, and we've gone to conservation where we are removing all invasive species and replanting the top of the coastal bank with native plantings as well as the additional plantings required for mitigation.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Just wanted to make sure it wasn't gonna be uh, at zero foot setbacks in five years' time.
Of course.
Uh, any other board members have have questions for the applicant?
I have one, just, I guess, just a confirmation, Attorney Schultz, just so I'm clear. The proposal here would comply with all applicable setbacks under the zoning currently, except with the front yard setback, for which you're relying on the provision that says as long as you're not any more infringing than the existing, and in in this case, you're making it less non-nonconforming, even though not not complying with the existing setback. Sorry, that was a mouthful, but does that make sense?
It it certainly does, and you're a hundred percent correct. It's equal to or greater setback.
Right, so so you're going from sixteen point eight to either twenty-one or nineteen, twenty-eight point seven or nineteen point seven, depending on where you measure it from.
That's correct.
Got it, thank you.
I'll just add one point. One, one dimension is to the face of the structure, and the other dimension is to the second floor overhang because we are replicating the existing form. So there's the two dimensions there, and it's a greater than two foot overhang, so.
And they both exceed the existing setback, which is the point, great. Yep, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just have a a question on the, it looks like there's two separate buildings there. What is the second building? It's not the garage.
And it, would that be on the uh, the westerly side?
Skin picture, right?
That's correct, yes, it's a accessory dwelling.
Okay. All right, and how many square feet larger than the original is this?
I can pull, just give me a second and I will pull that number up for you. Um, the existing structure. The existing structure is um, approximately five, four thousand five hundred ninety-seven square feet.
Okay.
And the proposed, which will include a full basement below the primary residence, except with exception of the garage, um, will have a total, and and this also includes the accessory dwelling unit. Um, so for the floor area ratio calculation, the gross square footage will be ten thousand two hundred and twenty-three.
Wow, okay. So the original grounds, and they didn't have that accessory building, right?
Correct.
All right, that's it.
All right, um, I will open for public comment. We did receive the one letter. See if I can pull it back up here. Um, that Attorney Schultz referenced uh, from Von Mor- Mor Terosian, uh, twenty-five Seaview Ave. Um, he was in support of the project. Um, if there's anyone here to speak to this, just unmute yourself and uh, say your name and address for the record, um, and and make your comments. Seeing none, I will make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote on closing public comment. Uh, Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Any else?
In favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
In favor.
And I'm also in favor, so public comment is closed. Um, I again, I've been preaching this for a while. I thank Town Council for having made these these special permit provisions, so we're not trying to wrestle with the variance here and giving us some pretty clear criteria to make sure that it fits within the box of of their um, intent. So I think this is a pretty clear, clear one that we can move forward. Does anyone else have any thoughts or opinions on it?
I agree.
No, I I I agree with with.
None from me.
Does someone wanna make findings?
Uh, yeah, I can. Uh, with regard to special permit number two zero two five zero two zero Coxall, section two forty ninety-one H three developed law protection, demolition, rebuilding on non-conforming lots. For all special permits, the board is required to make general findings pursuant to two forty one twenty-five C. The board should review the evidence presented by the applicant staff and members of the public. And after weighing such evidence, is encouraged to articulate if and how the evidence contributes to each required findings. That number one, the application falls within a category specifically accepted in the ordinance for grant of a special permit. Section two forty ninety-one H three allows for the demolition and rebuilding of residence on a non-conforming lot. Number two, that site plan review is not required for single residential dwell- dwellings. Number three, after an evaluation of all the evidence presented, proposal fulfills the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and would not represent a substantial detriment to the public good or the neighborhood affected. Find that further, section two forty ninety-one H three requires the board to find that if the proposed demolition and rebuilding cannot satisfy the criteria established as H one as of right, then the board may allow the demolition and rebuilding by special permit, provided the board finds that uh, number four, the proposed yard setbacks must be equal to or greater than the yard setbacks of the existing building. All proposed setbacks will conform to the ordinance. That the proposed lot shall not exceed twenty percent or the existing lot coverage, whichever is greater. The proposed lot coverage is fifteen point five percent, which does not exceed the threshold. Number six, that the floor area ratio shall not exceed point three or thirty percent. The existing floor area ratio of the structure being demolished, which is ever is greater. The existing FAR is twelve point five percent, and the proposed FAR is sixteen percent, which does not exceed the threshold. Number seven, that the building height in feet shall not exceed thirty feet to the highest plate and shall contain no more than two and a half stories. The proposed dwelling height um, is twenty-two feet six inches. And the board is also asked to find that the proposed new dwelling would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing dwelling. Uh, we see there has been no public comment and we have received a a letter um uh, in um that is uh, in the affirmative for the project. Those are my findings.
Do I have a second based on Mark's findings?
Second.
Uh, roll call vote on um, approving appeal number twenty twenty-five dash zero two zero with Mark's findings. Uh, Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
In favor.
Manny Alves.
In favor.
And I am also in favor. Um, and then Mark's conditions.
Uh, suggested, I have um, based on staff report dated July tenth, twenty twenty-five. I have conditions one through six.
Yeah.
Um, with a um, I figure I'm gonna mention this because I'm seeing it. Number five, that all mechanical equipment associated with the dwelling, that they be screened. Um, I'd like that to be something that is um, that is paid particular attention to. Those are my conditions.
Okay, um, roll call vote on the conditions. Mark Hanson.
I'm in favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
I'm in favor.
Any else?
In favor.
And I am also in favor. Um, so Attorney Schultz, you guys have your special permit. Good luck with the project. It looks like it will be a beautiful home with those scene photos that we were given.
Excellent, well, thank you all for your time this evening and have a nice night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving along, correspondence. There's nothing on the agenda, but we did receive um, a notice for a Cape Cod Commission hearing on the Falmouth Road Market project, uh, that is April eleventh, twenty twenty-five at five P M. And a Cape Cod Commission hearing notice for the Cape Cod Country Club Solar Project, August fourth, twenty twenty-five at five P M. And a revised hearing notice on the Falmouth Road Market project is I think changed to Monday, July twenty-first, first, twenty twenty-five at five P M. Um. Any meat matters, not recent, reasonably anticipated? Anna, do we get anywhere with the pool or trying to get a special permit provisioning with the pool stuff? Is that still moving along or are we sort of stalled with it? We don't have a town attorney right now, so.
Right, i- it's stalled.
Just checking, that's fine. Um, upcoming hearings, August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five is in person, August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five remote, September tenth, twenty twenty-five in person. Um, I think we're gonna, August thirteenth, I believe, the Wilkins Project, the Hannover Two is coming back um, for another in-person hearing. Anything else we need to know, Anna?
I think that's it.
All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Um, roll call vote. Uh, Mark Hanson.
In favor.
Aaron Webb.
In favor.
Larry Hurwitz.
In favor.
Annie Alves.
In favor.
Natalie Pittinger.
In favor.
I'm also in favor, so we are all set.